Here. Ryan Key.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
Sangstock.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Barsak.
Here.
Chapeleski.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
May.
Here.
Ten present unexcused.
We have a quorum. Alderman Probst will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we go into the public hearings this evening, I'd like to ask Chief Stryker to join me. And then also if Joel and if he wants to bring up his brother Kendall could come up and join us. So, I'm sure as we all know that it was on March 17th that we had a tragedy in our city and we lost two young lives in a house fire. And right now, I want to offer this certificate of commendation to Joel Gonzalez, who was in the home at the time of this fire and was able to rescue his four-year-old brother Kendall before exiting the residence himself. And I'm just going to quickly read this and present this to Joel, and then Chief Stryker also has a presentation. Certificate of commendation awarded to Joel Gonzalez in recognition of your brave and heroic actions on March 17th, 2013, resulting in the safe delivery of your brother Kendall Henson from the fire at your home at 1621 South 57th Street in West Dallas. We offer our heartfelt appreciation for your rescue attempts and commend you for every effort you made in the attempt to save all lives. So Joel, thank you and congratulations.
Okay. I realize this evening's presentation is going to be bittersweet. Two young boys lost their lives in a tragic fire on March 17th. The events of that night will live on in many people's memories. To the police officers that arrived on scene and made attempts to rescue those inside, to the firefighters that climbed that back stairwell only to be pushed back by the intense heat and flames, but it will affect no one more than the families that lost a loved one. There is a silver lining to this tragic event. The outcome of this fire could have been much worse. Had it not been for the heroic actions of Joel Gonzalez, there may have been additional fatalities that night. As many of you are aware, and for those of you who are not, in the early morning hours of March 17th, a fire broke out in the Gonzalez home. Joel Gonzalez was awakened by the pounding on the back door by his downstairs neighbor. Joel was confronted by thick smoke and realized he didn't have a lot of time to get out. Joel reacted to the situation. He located his younger brother and escorted him to safety through the thick smoke and high heat. Joel tried to re-enter the home to save his other brother and his friend, only to be beaten back by the intense heat and smoke. Joel is a true hero. There's no greater honor in life than to save the life of another. On behalf of the West Dallas Fire Department, I'd like to present Joel with this plaque to honor his actions.
I think if we want, we'll take a brief recess so everybody can get together and you guys don't have to stick around, you're welcome to, but thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Barsak.
And move that recess for five minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, we are in recess. Okay, we will call the common council back to order and we will go into our public hearings. We have three items for public hearing this evening. I will ask the clerk to read item number one.
A hearing on the special use permit to amend the hours of operation for Pizza Pit, an existing restaurant with an apportion of the existing fuel station located at 6819 through 6821 West Lincoln Avenue.
Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to be here. This first item was before the council about a month ago. The Pizza Pit Restaurant recently established at 68th and Lincoln, crossroads of Lincoln and Beloit. At the time, it was presented to the council that the hours of operation would be from 10 a.m. to 1 a.m., and that was approved for the delivery service. However, after further talking with the owner, he would like to have the carryout service open until 1 a.m. as well. And this was an oversight, I think on staff's part, there was some miscommunication. This has gone through the Plan Commission. Plan Commission has recommended that the agreement with the hours being extended for the delivery and the carryout service till 1 a.m. The dine-in portion, which basically consists of a small little seating area, one seat for people waiting, there's really not a table or anything, will close at 10 p.m. There have been no objections to date, as of recently, in the past public hearing, there was one objection received from a nearby pizzeria.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Scher. Are there any questions or comments from the council on this item? Okay, seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the audience on this item? Okay. Seeing none, we will close our first public hearing and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number two.
A hearing on the special use permit for Lupitas Mexican Kitchen, an expansion of an existing restaurant located at 1126 South 70th Street.
Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a existing restaurant at 1126 South 70th Street, the former Alice Chalmers East Office buildings. It's on the ground floor, accessible from 70th Street, and the zoning is M1 manufacturing, which does permit restaurants as a special use. What's bringing this here tonight is that there's an outdoor patio proposed in front of the business, out in front, near the front entrance, which is here, 70th Street being at the bottom, walkway, the sidewalk, walkway, and then a new patio outside the entrance. This has gone before the Plan Commission, which has recommended approval. The parking requirements, as stated, there's only 10 spaces required for this particular restaurant, but the overall property requires much more, being an office building, and there's 738 provided on the site. Again, this restaurant does cater, it is open to the public, but does specifically cater also to the employees of the facility. One of the things we're working with the owner on is an updated site and landscaping plan. As you saw on the previous slide, it was fairly general. The landlord of the property has done some landscaping along 70th Street, but we're also working with the restaurateur and the patio of creating a little bit more separation between the sidewalk, typical sidewalk, and the outdoor patio area, as seen in some of these slides and local examples here, this one being on Lincoln Avenue and this one on 70th Street just nearby. The applicant does have a wine license and is seeking a Class B beer license, which will be coming before the council, license and health, on the 21st of May. The wine or beer will need to be served in a controlled and contiguous area, and that's the reason for the site planning and the need for that control. If a liquor license is issued for the outdoor dining area, it would need to have a direct doorway access out. In other words, you can't come out through a common entrance, you'd have to have a direct doorway out of the restaurant and onto the patio. And there have been no objections to date.
Thank you, Mr. Scher. Are there any questions or comments from the council on item number two? Okay, seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the audience on item number two? Okay, seeing none, we will close our second public hearing and I'll ask the clerk to read public hearing number three.
A hearing on an ordinance to amend Section 12.41 Sub 2 of the Revised Municipal Code relative to permitting secondhand article stores as a special use and to amend Section 12.43 Sub 2 relative to including pawn shops and secondhand jewelry dealers as a special use subject to a 3,500-foot separation clause.
Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. Our existing zoning ordinance does permit secondhand stores, pawn shops, secondhand jewelry dealers with a special use, but only in the C4 Regional Commercial District. This was put in place a few years ago. Since that time, there's been an upsurge in demand for additional secondhand stores, whether it's thrift, whether it's consignment, or the typical bike shop or computer store that happens to take in, for instance, older bikes, refurbish them, repair them, and want to sell those back to the public. So what this ordinance is doing, more or less, is establishing, well, first of all, establishing a definition of antique within the zoning ordinance. And I forgot to mention that antique stores are also permitted in all commercial districts. So what this ordinance will do is establish a definition for an antique store or an antique use. Secondly, to then permit secondhand stores as a special use in C2, C3, and C4 districts. Currently, they're only permitted in C4 as a special use. And then the third part would be that pawnbrokers and secondhand jewelry dealers would be separated from secondhand stores, but then the pawn and secondhand jewelry dealers would be subject to a 3,500-foot separation clause within the C4. And that's very similar to what was passed by the council in 2006 for payday loan stores and check cashing stores and the like. So the definition of antique, I just took some key words from the definition that's been proposed, basically a collectible item desirable of various vintage or time period, exhibiting a unique character, craftsmanship, and a certain attention to detail and design. So, and I guess in the comparison, you know, these on the left here are antiques, they have some form of unique craftsmanship to them from a certain era in time, they're older vintage types of items, whereas the typical thrift store items here on the right are not antique. So we want to sort of create that separation between, you know, the thrift store, what we call a thrift store or a secondhand store, and that of an antique store, antique stores being permitted uses, the secondhand stores being special uses as proposed by this ordinance. Here's a map of the zoning of West Dallas. Currently, secondhand stores and so on are only permitted in this dark red area here, basically between Lincoln Avenue, along Highway 100, between Lincoln and the southern city limits. The additional zoning areas are shown here in orange and purple, the C2 and C3 districts that would also allow these types of uses as permitted. And the pawn shops and secondhand jewelry dealers would continue to only be permitted as special uses within the C4 district. Additionally, though, with a separation clause of 3,500 feet added to our ordinance. And there would be also a percentage established for secondhand jewelry dealers, not to be confused with the typical general retail type of jeweler. When we have a secondhand jeweler, meaning primarily engaged of 20% or more of the floor or display space devoted to secondhand transactions, then it's a secondhand jewelry dealer. If it's under that threshold, then it's just a typical jeweler. And Plan Commission has recommended approval of this ordinance, and there have been no objections received to date.
Thank you, Mr. Scher. Are there any questions or comments from the council on public hearing number three?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Weigel.
Steve, I see the C1, the downtown, was left out of this conversation. I know there's been issues about secondhand dealers and resale and thrift choppy stuff. I'm glad to see that you're getting a handle on the antique idea. I'm wondering, are we, I mean, have you heard from the bid? Are they interested in adding antique stores in the downtown area? Or have they just said they're just, they want to leave things the way they are?
Antique stores are currently permitted in the downtown.
They are permitted.
And that'll remain the same. It's just that the bid indicated that they were not interested in being included with this ordinance. It previously had been allowed secondhand stores in the past, years ago, that was taken out, and they'd like to remain that way.
But isn't this a new definition for antique, though? Have we had this before?
Yeah, we currently don't have a definition of antique, so this is a definition that we currently don't have that we're going to be adding to our zoning ordinance.
So now that we have a definition of antique, we may see actual antique stores?
There's going to be, the criteria is established basically to sort of weed out someone that may be calling themselves an antique store but technically isn't.
I get it, I get it.
We're going to use that as the criteria.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Reiki.
Could you tell me, Steve, the antique shops, are they also included in that 3,500?
No, only the secondhand jewelers as well as pawnbrokers would be included in 3,500-foot rule.
The secondhand shops, but not the antique shops?
Not the antique shops, no.
Why didn't we include the antique shops in that?
Well, if they have a pawn element, where they're selling something on collateral or, you know, loaning money or something, short-term credit types of establishments, that wouldn't be permitted. I mean, they would better fit the definition of a pawn shop at that point. If it's purely an antique shop, like we had at one point in time on Mineral Street on 60th, you know, that was an antique shop, which, you know, is just a permitted use.
So antique shop, is that a special use?
No, it's currently a permitted use.
I didn't think so.
It does require a license under Chapter 9, but it would be a permitted use, an antique shop, yes.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Reiki. Are there any other questions or comments from the council on public hearing number three?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman May.
Steve, that was a pretty good presentation. About halfway through, I think, I got a bit confused at exactly what's going on. What was the purpose, I guess, for coming up with this? It's to separate antiques from other types, is that right?
Correct, yeah. We want to separate antique shops, make a distinction that an antique shop is a place with vintage items, articles, as opposed to a thrift store or a secondhand store, as we're calling it, that sells, you know, used clothing. They may sell used furniture, but it's typically not of a specific era or vintage or type of craftsmanship. I mean, they may have certain pieces within their shop that are interesting of that character, but the whole of the shop is more retail in nature, not necessarily collectible.
My apologies. My next question was, I think this is the part where I was confused. Right now, there are these restrictions in the C4 for the secondhand jewelry and pawn shops. We're expanding a restriction onto these other districts? Or, I mean, are we taking them from permitted to special use? Are we taking them from prohibited to special use? What are we doing?
Sure. What we're doing is currently, secondhand shops, pawn shops, and secondhand jewelry stores are permitted as special use only in the C4 district, the Highway 100 corridor, basically, south of Lincoln Avenue. What we're doing is we're taking secondhand stores out, such as playroom closet, other places such as that, taking those out and putting those into a permitted, or I'm sorry, a special use category in more than just the C4 district. Thrift shops will now become permitted as a special use within the C2, the C3, and the C4 district, whereas pawn shops and secondhand jewelry dealers will continue to remain as special uses within just the C4 district. Now, in addition to that, we're going to add on the separation clause for pawn dealers. And our basis for adding that separation clause was with certain pawnbrokers not reporting transactions to NURIPS system and fencing and other types of stolen goods being sold through pawn shops. That's our basis, our rationale for creating that separation clause.
And then lastly, the difference between a secondhand store and a thrift store. I mean, if a place wants to open on Greenfield Avenue and wants to have people drive up, drop things off to donate, you know, a lot of times in the off-hours, they'll just leave them on the patio, you know, on the front sidewalk or something and hope on Monday morning someone will come out and grab them. Are we allowing that sort of activity in C2 and C3? Or is there a differentiation between that type of thrift and the secondhand? Do you see where I'm going with that?
Yeah, thrift is thrift. I guess the way we'll control or manage the drop-offs and the donations that do occur at some of these locations would be through the special use. Within the special use, we can control the hours of operation, the lighting, where things and if things are dropped off, and how that's managed. The last thing I think we want, or a neighborhood wants, is for, you know, to have an unsightly pile of clothing laying outside the front of the business at any given time. So that can be controlled through the special use as part of that, the traffic, the staging, control of donations.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman May. Alderman Vitale.
Steve, in regards, say, down on Burnham Street on 59, so we do have, say, Good Samaritan at this time. So say if a used clothing retailers would like to locate within the 59th, 60th, or 61st Street. So would be a problem if they would like to locate within that vicinity?
The 60th and Burnham area is commercial, C2 typically, and that would permit...
It would.
If this ordinance passes, it would permit a secondhand store, allow them to open with a special use permit, and we would require a site and landscaping plan. And we'd gather all sorts of information to find out how they're going to control and manage donations, their hours of operation, similar like we do for restaurants and other special uses. It'd be that same process for these types of uses that we can manage with the business and how they're going to control that and provide the conditions.
You know, I don't mind, I mean, that we have to apply certain regulations and certain zoning, you know, but then once occasionally, I get flashbacks, you know, because the gun shop, you know, I mean, I'd like to go back a little bit on the gun shop issue, you know, I mean, they were able to locate at that site because we didn't have any controls in any way for them to move across from a school. So there was no issue for them to move across from a school. So there was no issue for the city to pursue. But then, at the same time, we could just move forward to regulate many of the, say, small businesses and on and on, you know. Which, like I said, I'm not totally objecting, but the fact that is, how really sometime our system really works, you know, within our citizens and within our people. Sometime where the people's rights are, you know. The gun shop could go anywhere within our communities, and then at the same time, we're able to telling any business to come into a status of where they should go and what location they should be. I mean, like I said, I'm not totally objecting to that, but that's one issue that sometime it really boggles my brains. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing number three. Thank you, Mr. Scher.
Thank you.
We will move on to item E on our agendas, citizen participation. This is an opportunity for residents to address the council on matters of interest to them. We ask that you try to keep your comments to five minutes, and we limit this section of our agenda to approximately 30 minutes. Are there any members of the audience that wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening?
Joe Jans, 9606 West Harding Place.
Hey, Joe.
Yes?
Can I put you on hold for a minute?
Sure.
Was there anybody in the audience that wished to speak on item number three to the common council? I apologize. Don't be shy now, because we have to backtrack. Feel free to come up. Okay. You're on, Joe.
I've been here representing the Tavern League. You guys passed an ordinance a couple of weeks ago. We have regular meetings with the Tavern League. We've been trying to get Milwaukee to come in. I think one of the aldermen from Milwaukee, I don't know if anybody else is coming in to the meeting this week or next Monday. Some of the parts of the ordinance are similar to Milwaukee, and there's been some issues, probably unintended, that have developed in Milwaukee, and you're probably going to have the same issues here in West Dallas. I know it doesn't go into effect this year, but we have a meeting Monday at Bagoo's at 1:00 p.m. I talked with Mickey about it, but if anybody else wants to come to this meeting, it's an opportunity to both go over some of the issues here and some things that you guys might have been having trouble with taverns. I mean, I can't imagine you having trouble with taverns, but if there are some repeat issues that you guys are having, you know, and you want to, hopefully somebody will show up, but there are some things here that caused confusion in the city of Milwaukee, and it just soon after happened here, so if anybody wants to show up, 2010 Bagoo's, I'm happy.
Thanks, Joe. Can we have your address, too, please, for record?
9606 West Harding Place.
Thank you. Oh, I didn't hear it the first time. I was getting corrected on my error earlier, so now I'm two for two on those. Anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will close with citizen participation. Move on to page two, item F on your agendas. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess. Those page numbers are on your agenda on page two. Mayor's report. I have a couple of things to go over this evening. First, the West Dallas Professional Firefighters Local 1004 is going to be hosting a fundraising event. All proceeds raised will be donated to the families of the children whose lives have been lost due to the recent tragedies in our community. Donations will assist these families with funeral expenses or to support other charitable funding established by the victims' families. This will be on Friday, May 17th, from 6 till 9 o'clock at AMF Bowling on Highway 100 in Lapham. I believe Rupina's is contributing brats and food to this event. It is $10 per person. The Milwaukee Admirals mascot, Roscoe, will be making appearances over the course of the evening, and there will be, I believe, raffles and auctions and things like that. So if you, don't have to be good at bowling, but if you enjoy bowling, again, that is Friday, May 17th, from 6 until 9. I also want to mention the fire station is having their open house on May 18th, and that is at the station on 67th Place. That is more information on that on the city's website. And I also want to thank Jefferson Elementary School for hosting the city's Arbor Day festivities last Friday. I went to the presentation there and then helped them plant a few new trees outside of the school, and it was a great event. I believe that concludes the mayor's report this evening. We will move on to alderperson's comments.
Mayor DeVine.
Alderman Wrote.
Again, Mr. Scher, I'd like to sound revely for our Memorial Day Parade this May 27th. We've got one trolley filled already. We're having two this year, and I hope we can fill it. And what I'm doing this year, what we're doing, is the past years, it's always been World War II and Korean veterans. This year, we're inviting all veterans, all veterans, Vietnam, Iraq, Kosovo, you served, call me. And it's men and women, too. A lot of times, people ask the question, "I can't walk anymore." Well, we've got the senior center reserved, they walk 10 feet, they're on a trolley, they get dropped off at the same place. So please call me, and if you're ambulatory, we got room for four wheelchairs. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Do we have any other alderperson's comments this evening?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitale.
Yeah, I would like to discuss some of my feelings in regard the U.S. Senate background checks, based on the votes, based on their determinations. About a month ago, I did watch the 2020 programming on ABC. The ABC reporter, he went in four states, some the eastern state and some the southern states. They had four gun shows. Within those visits that they paid, they spent nearly $3,000 to purchase from pistol to guns to assault rifles. So based on their approach to the sellers in those gun shows, the seller, he didn't even, he had a hidden camera, the seller, he didn't even request an ID to sell the guns. You know, in those four states that they visited was on TV on ABC. So that's a little bit disappointing, based on the outcome of the U.S. Senate, based on the background checks. So the question stands, of course, credibility, questions about checking people who come from abroad, for instance, immigrants. He's got a green card, so he comes to USA, so he neutralized a USA citizen after five years. But within a year, he could apply for a driver license. So as long as he has a driver license, he could go anywhere and purchase a gun, because he has an ID, he's got a driver license. So in a civilized country, what really would be the consequences with technology that we have today for our system to have a background check of an individual to purchase that particular gun? I'm not objecting to people having guns, but what would be the problem? Somebody comes from across, from anywhere in the world, is able to get a gun in this country. In many cases, if they go to a gun show, they didn't even ask for an ID. So if they go to a gun shop, maybe they do ask for some information, so they'll be able to sell them a gun. Maybe that man, he only lives in this country for a year. And to me, that's absolutely wrong, that this system, the U.S. Senate, because they're lobbying by the gun people, or the gun maker, Odiya Hanareh, which to me, it's a stronghold in this country, and that's one thing I'm really disappointed. President John Kennedy, one time, he said, and I read to you, it's a short paragraph, "I am and will be proud, the absolute lack of courage of those Democratic and Republicans' senators, to stand up to the National Rifle Association, and lie set forth, and that pressure submitted by the organization sickened me." That's what President John Kennedy said. There were few members of the Senate who exemplified courage and honor and understood what John Kennedy said. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other alderperson's comments this evening?
Mayor DeVine.
Alderman Barzak.
Moving on to issues that affect the city. One of the things that happened in the city of West Dallas when it gets really nice out is cruising starts to become a little more of an issue. And with the beautiful weather that we've had about the last three weekends, Alderman May and myself have been getting inundated with phone calls about, especially the quality of life in the area of 109th Street, 110th, between Theater Trecker Drive and Walker Street. And we just want to let those people know that for one of the first times, Chief Paget and his staff are committing themselves to really, really help and try to get this under control, and we're working with the engineering department, we're working with the neighbors. And I just want the neighbors to know, because the last, I'm going to say, especially the last weekend, I caught an earful from more than one neighbor on 109th Street on how their quality of life has changed, that cars are continuing to drive up and down the street, and one of the things that we're going to do is we're going to get a grasp on this issue, and we're going to, we're going to solve it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Barzak. Any other alderperson's reports?
Mayor DeVine.
Alderman May.
Following up on Alderman Barzak's comments, everything he stated is exactly true, thank you to the fire department, sorry, the police department for helping us out and setting up some plans of what we're going to do this coming summer to help curb some of the problems for the neighborhoods. I personally don't really have an issue with cruising itself. It's when it creeps into the neighborhoods that it becomes a problem. I think this is good notice to those businesses on Highway 100 to keep control of the parking and the loitering that happens on your parking lots. Please do what you can to help us out with this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other alderperson's comments or reports this evening?
Mayor DeVine.
Alderman Lisick.
I understand there is a correction to tonight's agenda.
That is correct. That is correct. Agenda item number 20 is being withdrawn.
I would then move for approval of the agenda as modified.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by Alderman Reiki. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor DeVine.
Alderman Lisick.
I move for approval of the minutes of the common council regular meeting of April 16th, 2013.
There's a motion with a second by Alderman Singstock. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item J on your agendas. I'll ask for a motion to refer items four, five, six, and seven to the city attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Some motion by Alderman May and a second by Alderman Probst. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Standing committee reports this evening, License and Health Committee, Alderman Chapleski.
I'd like to report on items number eight through 12 on tonight's agenda. These are four licenses, which were voted for approval, and one report, which was voted to place in file by four members of the committee with one member excused. I'd like to move for the adoption of the committee's report.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by Alderman Barzak. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor DeVine.
Alderman Lisick.
Move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Probst. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are in recess.